Good evening, we'd like to welcome everyone to the April Elizabethan City Schools Board of Education Meeting. If everyone would please rise, Ms. Alexander's going to lead us in a moment of silence and pledge the flag.
As we pause for a moment of silence, I ask that you think of three individuals whose recent serious illnesses or injury merit your prayers. Mrs. Armstrong, Ms. Baker, and Ms. Shelby Hyder. Thank you. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While Mr. Alexander is getting ready to make a recognize as citizen of some pretty remarkable feat, I'd like to just take a minute. Again, we do miss the presence of Ms. Armstrong and Ms. Baker. We wish them a very speedy recovery. We'd like to take a moment and recognize Mayor Alexander, council members, Mr. Tester, and Mr. Carter. We're very happy to have you all tonight. Mr. Alexander?
To recognize an individual who, because of her courageous actions 55 years ago, she, I want to read this plaque in reference to Ms. Elizabeth Watkins Crawford. A former Elizabethan City School employee and current substitute teacher who was, in 1958, one of the four African-American students who desegregated what is now East Tennessee State University, presented by, of course, by the Elizabethan Board of Education. Folks, we can only imagine the courage that took, and I think probably Art Smith deal and I are the ones old enough in here to remember that when that happened. Ms. Crawford, come forward here, will you please?
To the board, to Mr. Alexander, and a lot of people in here that I know, and you've known me for a long time, because I've lived here longer than I'd have in Johnson City. But that's where my story began, and I thank Elizabethan Star for the long story that they wrote about me. I thank them a lot. I accept this on behalf of my fellow people who walked with me, my fellow friends, Clarence McKinney, who is now deceased, he did not live long enough to see all of this that happened for us, the fountain and everything, but we still remember him. Luela Orin Swagner, my best friend, George Nichols, who is a business person who had the longest write-up in our little folk, so, but he did a lot of things. He was also a military person. I'm thankful to be able to say that we walked peacefully, we went into that school peacefully, due to the fact that our parents and our teachers, who were outstanding people, knew exactly what to do, and the ETSU teachers and staff also. Just a little bit of how I felt about Elizabethan since I've been here 40 years. I hope and pray that if I've touched your life, it's been with kindness and a little bit of laughter. Thank you.
We have several individuals who've requested to speak tonight. I believe most everyone received a copy of our policy from Ms. Perkins. We have one on the podium, just in case. For anyone who didn't receive that, just real briefly, I'm just going to read just a little excerpt. Individuals speaking to the Board shall address remarks to the Chairman and may direct questions to individual Board members or staff members only upon approval of the Chair. Each person speaking shall state his name, address, and subject of presentation. Remarks will be limited to five minutes unless time is extended by the majority vote of the Board. The Chairman shall have the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who does not adhere to the above rules or chooses to be abusive to an individual Board member or the Board as a whole. Members of the Board and the Director of Schools may have the privilege of asking questions of any person who addresses the Board. Individuals desiring additional information about any item on the agenda shall direct any inquiries to the Office of the Director of Schools. So again, just please come forward, state your name. Would I ask that if you follow the agenda, we have several folks, just kind of go in the order, we have that in a second page. I believe Tim Larkins is first.
As stated, my name is Tim Larkins. I reside at 721 Dugger Road here in Elizabethan, Tennessee, 37643. The reason I'm here is to address Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Alexander's recommendation that he not be extended his being principal. Prepare my remarks, please want me to read them, to make best use of my time. Board members, thank you for the opportunity to share my concern and voice my opinion about an issue that affects many of us, particularly those in the Westside School District. I stand before you representing my family, including our four children who attend Westside. We have been and continue to be involved in their school lives for the last 12 years. My wife served as room mother for several of those. With my youngest child now in kindergarten, we will be enjoying another five more years at Westside. But tonight, I stand before you representing many others as well. Among them are hundreds of parents, students, and faculty who, on Thursday, April 4th, expressed the same concern. It was announced that Mr. Alexander had reached a decision that Mr. Doug Mitchell should be released from his duties as principal at Westside following 2013 school year. No doubt this created uproar, especially when considering the instability that Westside experienced prior to Mr. Mitchell. How many interim principals and hopefuls were there? Maybe five? I'm not sure. We all lost count. But I'm not here to defend Mr. Mitchell. I don't believe he requires it. When you compare the issues of each side by side, it leaves you scratching your head in confusion, but I'm not naive enough to believe that any person is not without their faults, or maybe Mr. Mitchell is in the wrong in some way. But when reading Mr. Alexander's statements, both email and in the newspaper this week, they are thin and many without substance, and certainly subjective, but in some instances, embarrassing. If I was principal, and the superintendent asked me to address an issue of quote homework overkill, I would be offended. With Tennessee receiving a grade of D for K through 12 achievement in Education Week's Quality Counts January 2013 press release, no one in the system should have to defend homework overkill. I would hope the superintendent would show leadership and make that defense for me. And in regards to the more quote sensitive issue of the four Lord Tab Day comment, ridiculous. We can all think of a thousand things to say that would be insensitive, inappropriate, or make light of drug abuse, but Mr. Mitchell's comment is not one of them. And the harassment, Mr. Mitchell has been open and honest about what happened. I applaud him for making it right. Mr. Alexander's comments are simply another example of him distorting reality to advance his personal agenda, taking the skin of a truth and stuffing it with lies. Mr. Mitchell does not need a defense. His successful record at Westside Elementary is defense enough. His excellent performance reviews are defense enough. Does the school board not wonder how he could go from 4.0 to fired so quickly? It would be an understatement to say that there are hundreds of families who recognize Mr. Mitchell as a key, integral part of our school, community, and children's lives. I would be embarrassed for a school board or superintendent that would replace Mr. Mitchell. The concern that brings me here tonight is the questionable leader we have in Mr. Alexander. As we all remember, Mr. Alexander is familiar with the situation as he was on the other side many years ago, but the issues were not brought to public light in respect for Mr. Alexander's character. But in looking back, it seems that there have been many circumstances around Mr. Alexander that are unquestionable. To start with, we lowered our requirements to accept an individual who did not hold a doctorate degree. But most of us have heard the other stories and rumors. This is a small town. What concerns me is there are so many. Teachers leaving because they were tired of the politics and favoritism, staff moved around for no logical reason or to hide an embarrassment, or the potential mishandling of a suspicious student narcotic issue. What about insensitivity? In 2007, a tenured teacher asked for a transfer from Harold McCormick to Eastside to be with a daughter who had multiple physical and mental disorders. His cold response was, "There's nothing I can or will do about this situation or the way you feel about it." Not only was that insensitive, but he offered no other response. There were three openings at Eastside that this teacher was more than qualified for. And the same year, she was named ECS Elementary Teacher of the Year. Board members, is that how you speak to or treat your best employee? Given Mr. Mitchell's exemplary record, do you think we should, he should be rewarded with a letter of termination? It's surprising to me that some may wonder why Mr. Mitchell was outraged at the meeting on April 4th. I'm not condoning Mr. Mitchell's behavior, but if faced with a plethora of accusations not based on fact, I can't say that I would have acted differently. In closing, I recommend that Mr. Ed Alexander be removed from his responsibilities as superintendent effective immediately, and his agreement not be removed. It's clearly time for the Board to choose a new leader, a leader that will treat all with respect and courtesy, one that will put the children and the community first and not the personal agenda, and leave the politics to the politicians. It's appalling to me that a leader of our education system would tell someone, "I'm sorry Doug, you wasted all the tests, but you still failed the course." Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Street, and I live at 134 Wedgwood Circle in Elizabethan, and I'm here to talk about Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Alexander. Since the meeting at Westside, two weeks ago, whatever it was, I've had conversations with, I can't tell you how many people, countless people, and the same theme comes up over and over, and that's embarrassment. People are embarrassed by the drama that's always surrounding our school system. I know when a person is involved in an organization, it's hard to see it as people from the outside see it, but I'm here to tell you that the city of Elizabethan to outsiders is seen as laughing stock in a lot of ways. Why? Because every time you open up the Star, there's a headline that tells about some drama, like the drama we're having to deal with tonight. The sad part is, I feel like my kids are getting a wonderful education, but I continually find myself having to defend our system with people who see it as inferior to Johnson City or Kingsport or other city systems. And I can only speak for the schools that my kids attend, but I'll tell you that I think Westside and DA Dugger have excellent teachers. Matter of fact, I put Westside up against any school, county or city, in East Tennessee, and I believe we would come out the winner, except in the area of public opinion. The personal vendettas, the fact that people who didn't grow up here are not given the same consideration as those who did, the fact that everyone knows that the teachers and staff and administrators are constantly afraid for their jobs. I mean, everybody knows that a leader who leads with fear has no followers, just puppets. The fact that people believe the superintendent supervises the Board rather than the Board supervising the superintendent, the fact that the superintendent would use failure to record discipline for 4.5 years as a reason for dismissing someone when in the real world, failure to properly complete a task for almost five years screams management problem. Yet Mr. Alexander used that as fodder for getting rid of Mr. Mitchell because he doesn't even recognize that it's actually an indictment on himself. The fact that the Director of Schools would go to such lengths to spread rumors and lies about an employee is a joke, even if some of those lies are mixed with an ounce of truth, just like I tell my kids, half-truth is always a lie. Also equally laughable is the claim of a 60 to 90-minute harassing phone call. Someone who's being harassed doesn't talk to the person harassing them for an hour and a half, but Mr. Alexander's view is so distorted, he doesn't even see the irony or hypocrisy in that. I could go on and on, but I can tell you this, the perception of the leader is the perception of the organization, and our kids deserve a better reputation for their schools than this. It's all about Mr. Alexander and not about what our kids, and not about our kids, and that's why these parents are here tonight. We'd rather be at home with our kids. But as I see it, the problem here is pride. Did you know that pride is actually mentioned 49 times in the Bible? You know how many times grace is mentioned? 170. Bible says, "God opposes the proud but exalts the humble." That means if a leader is proud, God opposes him. We need a leader that understands that pride goes before a fall, because in this day and age, we need God on our side more than ever. I don't care what your belief about God is, but I doubt any of us in this room would like to have our personal failures paraded in public and our character attacks as we've seen Mr. Mitchell and other school employees who have been targeted. Do unto others as you would have them to do unto you, is a foreign concept here. Why? Because the leader has set the tone. If Mr. Alexander should have left well enough alone, because some parents don't have the filter to know better than to tell their children details that kids should not know. It has brought out stories of other teachers and administrators in the system who have had extreme moral failures. That means my nine-year-old has been told things about his teachers at school that, and others in the system, that he should not know, and quite frankly, I shouldn't have to explain to him. The Bible says, "You can be sure your sins will find you out," and it's very true here. Little goes on in this town that everyone doesn't know about, and I've been told of illicit affairs that have happened with administrators or teachers dating back years, and teachers and administrators that have kept their jobs or even been promoted. But I'm not casting stones. Bible says, "You without sin cast the first stone." Well, I'm certainly not sinless, and so don't think I'm pointing fingers. My point in saying that is, Mr. Alexander has been consistently inconsistent in disciplining his staff, and this type of leadership is a liability to our city, and as Board members, it's your responsibility to rein him in or rule him out. As a Board, collectively, you could have stopped this public embarrassment that happened this week, and I guarantee you, the voters didn't elect you so that you could remain silent. We, nor did we cast our vote to elect members who would continue to let the tail wag the dog when it comes to our school system. We don't need change, we don't simply need change in leadership, we need change in policy. No man should have the absolute power to hire and fire, but I think this embarrassment that we've seen over the past few weeks is reason enough. And here's my question, and I'm just about done. Who's going to take up the calls of the Doug Mitchells, the Mark Normans, the Audrey Collins, the Susan Peters, the Gerald Jenkins, the Amy Moores, the Daniel Tadlocks, and all the rest of them? Who's going to make the city school system known as excellent rather than the butt of jokes? And when will kids become the top priority? Who's going to reprimand and stop this type pettiness that leads to community embarrassment? As elected Board members, you answer first to God and the voting public, and I don't know, maybe you say that your inaction this week was the right thing to do. You all know about the people who've lost their jobs with little or no good reason, yet you've done nothing, and at some point, teachers and administrators need to be able to work in a stable environment without fear of retribution if their opinion differs from Mr. Alexander's. I'll say this, there are parents who would have been here tonight, but they're afraid that someone will take, will take out their being here on their kids. In closing, you have the facts about our school, you have the test scores, you know he's done an excellent job of leading Westside. Westside went from having a revolving door of 11 principals in 10 years to being a reward school for two years running. Quite honestly, he's helped make you, Mr. Alexander, and the community look good. Do the people at West, and the people at Westside told you clearly how they feel the other night. The question is, do you represent the best interest of the parents and the kids of Elizabethan, or do you answer to Mr. Alexander? Your response to this public embarrassment will give us all a clear answer to that question. And one last thing I'd like to say to Mr. Isaacs and Dr. May, I personally emailed both of you, and I know several other parents did as well, and all I got was crickets chirping. We weren't asking for your take on the matter or your opinion, but a thank you for your concern, or I appreciate your email would have been nice.
My name is Brad Barrick from 111 Dakota Avenue, 37643. I come as a concerned parent to voice about the same issue of the proposal or recommendation to remove Mr. Mitchell as principal of Westside. Mr. Alexander and Board members, I thank you for this opportunity, although I do not relish it, and I have learned a lot more than I care to know about this situation and many others within the Elizabethan school system over the years. Although I still support Mr. Mitchell remaining as the principal at Westside as well, a grand majority of the community, which was seen at the last parent meeting, I believe the real issue at this point is the dire need for honesty, integrity, transparency, consistency, and accountability to be integrated throughout the policies of our entire school We desperately need this if we intend to raise up children and youth of character and excellence through this school system, and we must do better than this. We all know as a leader, no one can ever please everyone, but I would believe that there could be policies put into place to properly handle situations like that we're currently experiencing at Westside and that have been experienced throughout the entire school system over the years. At the very least, the requirement of a valid documentation for these type employee changes or moves being presented and agreed on by the school board. It also seems like the defining of inappropriate and unethical behaviors for teachers and administrators, whether towards each other or students, and then having consistent consequences for these, seems to be necessary. This type scenario has happened all too often here in Elizabethan, and we must find a way to make some changes so that this does not continue happening over and over and over again. During the April Parents Meeting at Westside Elementary School, the overwhelming request from the concerned parents and citizens was for the superintendent to provide an adequate and valid proof for the eight allegations he cited as his reasoning for releasing Mr. Mitchell. Many of these allegations plainly seem to contradict most of all the available information concerning the review of Mr. Mitchell's performance and position, most of those reviews coming directly from the hand of the superintendent himself. Instead, without disclosing the two other private and non-illegal allegations in a private meeting with Mr. Mitchell, as the superintendent stated he would, both publicly at the parent meeting and to the school board in an email, the superintendent posted these two allegations along with two other new, not before mentioned allegations in the two local papers. The Star article, in the Star article, the superintendent is quoted in reference to the relationship between Mr. Mitchell and the other Elizabethan City School staff as inappropriate, unprofessional, and a reflection of poor judgment. Unfortunately, if we are to be fair, this also categorizes the handling of this situation by the superintendent as well. Although I do not claim to know absolutely, or do not claim that absolutely nothing occurred in that situation, the information provided in the newspaper is not even consistent with itself, and either demonstrates a lack of proper handling by the superintendent if it is accurate, and nothing more than character defamation or slander if it is not. The other private allegation, excuse me, disclosed in the article is not private, and is, in my opinion, taken entirely out of context. Another concern is the appearance of yet two more unsubstantiated and unrelated allegations to add to the original eight that was mentioned at the parent meeting. Why were these not mentioned at the parent meeting but brought up later? Likewise, if we are going to be fair, Mr. Mitchell's statement of, "Remember, you are in my building now," as mentioned in the article, was no more disrespectful than the superintendent's statement at that same meeting of, "Now, we just need to go get a robe for him," essentially invalidating all the comments of parents and concerned citizens who spoke in favor of Mr. Mitchell. Superintendent Alexander, members of the Board, parents and citizens, we can do better than this. I believe we cannot in good faith move forward with this recommendation as it stands. If the concern and priority is truly for the children and the youth, and to make the school system a model of quality education and safety, then I propose that the recommendation from Mr. Alexander do not be rehired for his position as principal of Westside Elementary School be tabled until a set of policies ensuring integrity, transparency, consistency, and accountability can be agreed upon by the Board wherein any staff changes must be presented and approved by the Board prior to their enactment. After these policies are agreed upon, and if still deemed necessary, the superintendent, whoever that may be at the time, may bring the recommendation of Mr. Mitchell through that fair process. I would say it's the least that can be done in comparison to number 15 on tonight's agenda, which is equipment dismissal request for a broken chair. If we are not willing to submit ourselves to this kind of accountability, then we are truly here for our own individual purposes and not for those of the children. The community is watching. This is our school system, and these are our children. We can do better, and we must do better. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Rebecca Powers, and I live at 600 Regency Lane in Elizabethan. Elected members of the Elizabethan City School Board, administrators, teachers in the Elizabethan City School System and community members, I am appalled. I'm appalled that a man with no documented blocks on his professional record would be removed from a position where he has done good work for no good reason. During Mr. Mitchell's five-year tenure at Westside Elementary School, a stable environment has been created which has allowed our children to thrive and our school to reap the rewards. His work as principal is supported by the overwhelming majority of the teachers who have been encouraged to find creative solutions to teach a demanding curriculum and have had the reassurance of knowing that their leader would back their actions and decisions. I have heard story after story about his kindness and compassion when working with children and families who have had difficulties at Westside. I have faked his ability to effectively lead the school for years to come. I have yet to hear a plausible reason to remove him as principal of Westside to stabilize our school and put the education of my children at risk. I'm appalled that I have been forced to watch an ineffective administrator attempt to earn public favor for a ridiculous decision that does nothing but advance a personal agenda by assassinating the character of a decent man in the media. Because Mr. Mitchell does not have good reason, or because Mr. Alexander does not have good reason or documentation to support his decision to remove Mr. Mitchell as our principal, he has gone to great lengths to scrape together a collection of distorted facts and allegations about events that occurred long enough ago in the past that if they were actually a problem, should have been appropriately addressed years ago. The fact that this Board of elected officials has sit back and allowed this travesty to occur is unconscionable. I'm appalled that I have been approached secretly by dozens of teachers from all of the city schools who tell me they are too scared to speak their minds freely under the current administration. They tell me there is an unspoken rule among the teachers and staff of his system that if they had expressed an opinion other than that of the current superintendent, they will be removed from their positions and placed in another job that would be uncomfortable enough to them and their families that they would be forced to quit and seek employment elsewhere. I have heard story after story from members of the community- I have heard story after story from members of the community that corroborate what the teachers tell me in secret. I've heard stories of injustice and outright nepotism. The idea that this board of elected officials would allow repeated pattern of bullying and oppression to continue makes me angry. I'm appalled that I hear rumors of indiscretions, poor choices, and immoral behavior in administrators, teachers, and staff of this school system, and this behavior is not only tolerated but rewarded with promotions and preferential treatment. I am not unintelligent, and I am fully aware of the dangers of listening to gossip, but I also know that where there is smoke, there is fire. The thought that I have entrusted my children's education, supported with my hard-earned money, and elected a board of officials that sustain a system that operates without integrity is beyond worrisome. I am appalled that this school system has a superintendent who seems to be fundamentally lacking the ability to effectively administrate, who has no regard for the ideals of innovation and improvement, and who repeatedly displays unprofessional behavior and disrespect to school board members. That this board of duly elected officials would allow themselves to be disrespected in this manner makes me incredulous and makes me question their motives, their actions, and their effectiveness. I was not born and raised in Elizabethan, Tennessee. I have been accused of not understanding how things work in a small town, but I understand decency. I understand right and wrong. I can clearly see when individuals abuse and oppress others to advance a personal agenda. I'm a contributing citizen of this town and an honorable servant of this community. I will not remove my children from a school system that my hard-earned dollars are sustaining. I will not sit by and allow injustice after injustice to occur in that system. It is my hope that we can prevent history from repeating itself in this manner and further dividing this community. The citizens of Elizabethan have been given a blueprint for how to effectively change the school system in the past. I call upon this board of elected officials to take effective action to allow a good man to keep his job and stop the ongoing abuse of the current administration.
I'm Rhonda Bolton, and I live at 9 Madison Court, Johnson City, Tennessee. I'm a former employee of Elizabethan School Systems and worked with Mr. Mitchell in educating the children of Elizabethan for four years. And I'd like to say that again, I worked with Mr. Mitchell, not for Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell is a team player and has always been a team player. He trusted his employees to educate the children of Elizabethan without micromanaging them. He never, as quoted in the paper, seemed to come and want to come to work under the influence of drugs, nor did he abuse drugs. He never appeared or shown evidence of attempting to have an affair. He was always professional with all his staff. The next thing I'd like to say is during my time at Westside, when I taught there, the school dynamics changed a whole lot when our school nearly experienced a 33% increase in attendance, in student attendance, and went from being a non-Titel One school to a Title One school, and with that, with the consistency of having Mr. Mitchell there as principal, managed to be a reward school two years in a row. I'd also like to address the fact that Mr. Mitchell is being removed from his position without any documentation. I find it hard to believe that anyone in 2013 can be removed from a position when they've never been written up, they've never been reprimanded, they have wonderful evaluations. How sad is that? It's 2013. I would also like to say that I have two other children who go to school in Johnson City, and I am sure that their superintendent has removed many principals over the years. As a matter of fact, I know of some that that's happened to. However, it's never happened the way that it has in Elizabethan. It's never been with controversy because the citizens of Johnson City and Kingsport trust their superintendent, they trust them to make good decisions based on documented facts. I don't think that's the case here. And I would like to speak and say that as a former employee of Elizabethan, I experienced firsthand what a wonderful school system we work in, but I also experienced firsthand that you can't say anything that goes against the opinion of Mr. Alexander. And I was told many times, "You better not say that if your classroom door's open." That's sad. We do not need to be in an environment where our teachers feel scared for their jobs and feel afraid to teach our children, and that, I feel like, is one of the reasons that Mr. Mitchell is being targeted, because he stood up as a human shield for those teachers and protected them so that they could do their jobs, which is exactly why that school excels the way that it does. I would be hard-pressed to find another man who would stand up for his employees like he does. Thank you.
My name is Linda Gaimond. I have a child at Westside, and I'm currently a teacher's assistant at Westside. I live at 188 Ruby Avenue here in Elizabethan, and I am here to discuss the recommendation regarding Mr. Mitchell. I really... a lot of eloquent people have spoken tonight and said pretty much what needs to be said, but I still want to point out that I am dismayed, astonished, that it seems okay to remove a principal who has multiple years' worth of performance evaluations that show he is not only competent but superior. If it is not documented in a performance evaluation, then how is there a problem to remove him? Why is there a reason to remove him? I think that's the big question tonight that everyone has asked. I've spent more than 15 years working in industry for lots of companies, big companies and small companies. I've been a manager. I've written performance evaluations, and the one thing that was indoctrinated to me is if it's not in the performance evaluation, it has no merit when it comes time to remove that employee. If you didn't document it, if it wasn't a big enough concern to document it at the time, how is it now worthy of removing that individual? In fact, most companies, in addition to having a performance evaluation, it's usually a standard procedure to actually generate a performance improvement plan, where you actually put that employee on notice and you say, "You will be terminated if these things aren't changed by such and such a date," and you put that in writing, because that protects the employer from lawsuits. And it's my understanding that there are policies, in the board policies, that require performance evaluations for this very purpose. So I know there is a long list of grievances against Mr. Mitchell, but they were all generated after the fact, after the recommendation was made. His performance evaluations show he performed great. That makes those accusations look suspect after the fact. They look unjustified. They look like an attempt to put a professional veneer around something that was a personal feeling toward someone. In my experience, a leader or a manager takes a successful employee and works on their deficiencies to make them a more successful employee. By all accounts, Mr. Mitchell met or exceeded expectations of the superintendent, and as we've heard in the meetings, he met or exceeded the expectations of the parents. Therefore, if he had deficiencies, which of course he did, everyone has deficiencies. I've never had an employee that didn't have deficiencies. But your objective as a manager is to improve that person and make them better, and that's another point of the performance evaluation, is you document those activities or those deficiencies, and you help that employee become a better employee. You don't throw away a gem like Mr. Mitchell because you disagree with his opinions. My experience working with Mr. Mitchell was he was always professional, has always been professional, puts the students first, exhibits leader behaviors at all times, even through what we've been enduring the last few weeks. I have watched him stand in front of those students and encourage them to study hard and do well at school, and to appraise them for their science fair projects, and show them leader behaviors. He knows the name of every student. I've been there three years, I still can't do that. I am new to the area, I've only lived here three years. I would talk to my friends that live in other communities and other towns, and they would complain about their principal, tell me things about their principal not being accessible, not being a good manager, stories about students that didn't even know what the principal looked like, didn't know him when they saw him in the hall, and I would brag about our principal, and I would brag about the way he makes decisions and the way he solves problems. He's very professional about that. I was proud of our school. I've been really heartbroken about what's happened the last couple of weeks because it has been so divisive to this community. It's been such a distraction to all of the schools. It's been a disgrace for all of the schools. It has impacted all of the schools, not just Westside. And I'm still very nervous about speaking out here tonight. I debated... I went back and forth 100 times. Lots of individuals made it clear to me that I was not making a good choice, that it would appear to be disloyal, and that I might not have a job in the school system next year for doing this. But I feel so strongly about an obvious... I just don't think this is the way the school intended to do business. The policies state there will be performance evaluations. So how can you fire someone who had four years of superior performance? And that's what this is, this is firing. Thank you for your time, I appreciate you listening to me.
If not, Ms. Peters.
My name is Susan Peters, and I live at 415 East K Street here in Elizabethan. I'd like to address a recent situation that's happened to me regarding my volunteer work at Harold McCormick. I've been a volunteer there for 12 years. I'm a retired teacher with 32 years of experience in teaching and administrative work. I began volunteering very soon after I relocated here to help take care of my parents. I was background-checked and have signed this volunteer agreement every single year since I've been here. Over the past weekend, I received several calls and emails telling me that I would be receiving a letter asking me not to return to school. Since I received no such letter over the weekend, I reported to school on Monday to do my regular volunteer work. I went into the office first to speak with Mr. Culbert because I knew nothing of this issue and had received no such letter. I finally received this rather strange mailing in my mailbox today. It's got two envelopes that have been opened several times, one's got a stamp and one doesn't. I believe this was hand-delivered, I've never received such a piece of mail like this. So I assume someone hand-delivered it. Mr. Culbert handed me a copy of the letter at this meeting, which cited three instances where I had supposedly offended some of the staff. The first two instances surrounded last fall's school board election. Mr. Culbert sent me an email stating I should be more cognizant of people's feelings, and I offended several staff members. The first issue was when I offered a candidate's nomination paper, who is also a parent of students, to Harold McCormick. Mr. Culbert stated in his email that I had put peer pressure on people. This did not happen. I only offered it to some people in passing, and if they said no, I moved on. Someone supporting another candidate already offered her nominating papers to the staff members, so I never considered this to be a problem. The second instance involved a letter I'd written to the Elizabethan Star stating that the elementary schools were losing their art, music, and computer labs to regular classrooms due to the ever-increasing enrollment numbers that I felt that the candidates running for school board should consider very seriously. Again, Mr. Culbert sent me an email stating that I had again made some folks feel uncomfortable. He never spoke with me personally about these issues, but I responded to his email and offered to leave Harold McCormick, but he declined my offer. The third and most recent incident again involved someone I had apparently offended by making remark about the most recent ECS controversy in a classroom. I have never discussed anything other than what a particular teacher asked me to do when children were present. In the letter he gave me on Monday, he stated one teacher even told you that you were shining a light on negative things that she did not want to talk to you about. This did not happen. In all the years I've been at this school, no one has ever had said anything like this to me, that I have offended them, or made them uncomfortable, or anything close to it. Mr. Culbert also stated in this meeting that it was a small minority of teachers that had made complaints, but yet when he was interviewed by the press, he told them it was several different groups. I offered to apologize to these individuals, but he would not tell me who they were, nor would he allow me to apologize to them in his office. Since Monday, I've spoken with the Elizabethan Star and the Johnson City Press about this situation. It was inevitable that they would have come to me because this issue was already out there Monday afternoon. I urged them, both of them, to talk with Mr. Culbert before they printed anything. I have since received two additional emails from Mr. Culbert, with copies also sent to Mr. Alexander. Mr. Culbert asked me, "How is going public with this issue going to help the children?" I submit to you that this entire situation had absolutely nothing to do with the children. I also feel that for way too long, not enough has gone public, and shining the light on situations such as this in our democracy is the only way to change things for the better. For far too long, too many people have been silent out of fear. Harold McCormick's mission statement reads in part, "To expand parent-community education and involvement, and to improve student and staff productivity through a positive school climate." They also encourage and appreciate volunteers, and I'm wondering how this particular situation is going to encourage future volunteers in the schools. In closing, I'd like to read an email that I sent to the entire staff at Harold McCormick on Monday afternoon, and I've had quite a few wonderful responses to it. "To all my special friends at Harold McCormick, as you've probably heard by now, I've been asked by Mr. Culbert not to return to Harold McCormick to do volunteer work. Apparently, I have offended some of you, but I am at a complete loss as to how to apologize, because Mr. Culbert would not tell me who was involved. I understand that he wanted to make it clear that I in no way meant to offend..." I understand, excuse me, "but wanted to make it clear that I in no way meant to offend any of you or divide the staff, as he has accused me of doing. It has been an honor and a privilege to work with many of you for the past 12 years, and I will miss all of you, and most importantly, I will miss the children. I have spoken, yes, and written letters publicly, but that was only to try and make things better and more positive for all of you. Again, if I've made some of you uncomfortable, as he told me I have done, I apologize. Have a successful two months, and then a restful and fun summer. I love all of you as friends and family, and thanks so much for allowing me to be with you at your school." The last thing I have is I have a letter signed by Connie Baker and Catherine Armstrong in support of me remaining at Harold McCormick, which is for the school board. Thank you very much.
My name is Sharon Lynch-Skeens, I live at 606 Beach Street, Elizabethan, Tennessee. I did not know till an hour ago that I would be the one reading the letter from Ms. Baker and Ms. Armstrong, as they cannot be here due to health reasons.
Ms. Skeens, can I pick up your...
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Skeens did inform us just prior to the meeting that Ms. Baker had dictated a letter and emailed it to Ms. Skeens to read at the meeting. Ms. Armstrong added her signature. We just wanted everyone to know that these are their words, and they did ask Ms. Skeens to read this.
It reads, "To whom it may concern," but they directly asked me to put it especially to the two new board members, "as the citizens of Elizabethan are watching and listening. I have known Ms. Susan Peters for a long time. She is an excellent volunteer in our city school system and one of the few that we do not pay. I've talked with students, teachers, and administrators, and they all praise the work that Ms. Peters has done. The students have shown a great deal of improvement during the time that she has worked with them. Ms. Peters shared with me that she had received a letter that she had offended..." Ms. Peters shared with me that she had received a letter that she had offended someone on staff. She further shared that she would like the opportunity to apologize and would do so if she knew whom she had offended. Her desire to make herself available to apologize to anyone she has offended is a demonstration of a character that I find above approach. Ms. Peters should be awarded for the work she has done and will do with our children. I'd like to say thank you to Ms. Peters for her love and devotion to our children over the many years that she has volunteered. Please allow Ms. Peters to continue to work as a volunteer in our school system. Our city school system needs more volunteers like her. Thank you, Ms. Connie Baker and Catherine Armstrong." And I would also like to add, she's helped my children at Harold McCormick School and many, many more times over. I've had issues that I've met to him with and about him wanting to remove a 4th grade teacher two years ago from the school. I called Nashville, I called everywhere because he was putting 28, 30 kids in a 4th grade classroom. I personally called you, Mr. Alexander, and before warning Mr. Buckles, the fire inspector person. And at the time, it was, you know, zoned or whatever, that that many kids could be in a classroom. You spoke very rudely to me on the phone and said, "Are you the one who called our marshal on me?" I said, "Yes, sir, I did." And you told me to worry about my children's safety and concern and education. Sir, that's what I'm doing and that's what all the parents here are doing. They are worried about their education. Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. We have listened to you. I would like to welcome you to stay for the remainder of our meeting. We are going to be moving into the consent regular part of the agenda. Again, you're welcome to stay, but if anyone needs to leave or wants to leave, we'll give everybody a few moments and then we'll continue with the, proceed with the regular meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? I would like to recommend that we remove item number 12 from the regular agenda. This is something that Ms. Armstrong had requested. Since she's not here, I'm not sure what she wanted to discuss, so out of respect for her absence, maybe we can remove that and can bring it up at a later date whenever she so wishes, if everyone's okay with that.
You said number 12 on the regular agenda.
On the regular agenda item, yes. And it will be attachment number 23.
We'll table it till the first meeting she's back, is that okay?
Or whenever she wants to.
Or whenever she's ready to submit it.
That's fine.
Yeah, I don't know what she wants with that either and like to hear her debate on it.
Anything else? Item on the floor is to approve the regular consent agenda, removing agenda item from the regular agenda number 12. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Alexander.
First of all, I'll ask those remaining to check out the 20 by 30 poster size enlargeness of what took place last month. The photos made during the board meeting. We'll do the same with Mrs. Crawford's plaque that was presented today. Something rarely mentioned, but it's something that you notice that isn't there, and that is the tremendous job that J. Bev's long service has done at our schools, even prior to the frost stopping or ceasing. That's Joseph Greenville and his group, and they're under contract with the board and they do a tremendous job. I hope that you've noticed that, but maybe you haven't, it's because it looks so good and you wouldn't notice it unless it wasn't there. I would ask as you go out today that you check the picture of Mr. Perry Elliott that's been added to the educators' wall and Hall of Fame out there, and it's the closest one this way. Also, I would like to say for the benefit of those individuals or council members that Mr. Elliott has committed to doing the 4th of July parade with those students who are actually here and not with their families on that date. And there also will be an alumni band presentation and participation in that 4th of July parade, which will be continued at the, those same individuals will be allowed to go to and participate in the homecoming parade later on. There also, at your desk is a copy from our IT department's filming of the Top 10% Dinner. And those were given to each member of the Top 10%, the 4.0 students. So with that in mind, those are for you. If you need an extra one, whatever, I'm sure Mr. Trent would make those. Now, for the personnel update, we have new hires, Kenneth Joyner, part-time bus driver effective 4-1. Michael Peters, full-time bus driver effective 4-2. Also, on the second page, you do have the addition of another new hire, Mary Calhoun, Eastside LPN effective 5-2. Resignations, Gregory Linsky, system-wide bus driver effective 4-1. Amanda Holly, Eastside LPN effective 4-4. Leave of absence, Vera Peters, Westside teacher 4-1 to 4-15. Krista Wright, EHS teacher from 4-8 to 5-27. Jane Wasson, TAW assistant to the teacher, 4-22 to 5-23. Kathy Sanders, TAW teacher assistant from 4-29 to 5-27. Tim Wasson, TAW teacher 5-1 to 5-14. Madam Chairman, that's my report.
Anything from Dr. Mayor, Ms. Troxick? Okay. First item on the agenda is to approve bid number 2012-2013-04-SN, the purchase and installation of a walk-in freezer for Harold McCormick Cafeteria from Douglas Equipment for the total of $13,000. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, the purchase of the freezer.
And second, Dr. May, thank you. Ms. Alexander?
Just fine. Ms. Williams is here, but I don't think there's going to be any debate on the selection of that, and she doesn't want to say anything, so that'll be, unless you have a question about that, then.
This says two bids were returned and two are deemed unacceptable, so does that meet our requirements for four, for three bids?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I spoke with the young lady back there and she was discussing that freezer and cooler is in pretty dire need of some attention. I think it's in pretty sad shape and I think it would be wise for us to do this to meet the regulations and the things of that nature to keep the temperature correct. So I think it would be wise for us to make this purchase simply for maintenance reasons.
Anything else? Item on the floor is approve bid number 2012-2013-04-SN, purchase and installation of a walk-in freezer for Harold McCormick Cafeteria from Douglas Equipment for the total of $13,000. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, approved recommended lunch price increases for the 2013-2014 school year. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Ms. Alexander?
Ladies and gentlemen, we never want to raise prices on lunches, and if you have specific questions about how much, Ms. Williams can fill you in on that, but under circumstances, this is absolutely essential to do this and we have, I have to recommend it.
It looks like it's a dime.
Yes, ma'am. But anything to people who have very little is a lot.
Any questions? Comments? Item on the floor is to approve recommended lunch price increases for the 2013-2014 school years. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, approved contract with staff development for educators for professional development training with David Burgess on May 29, 2013 in the amount of $3,843 to be paid from Title II funds. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, though.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Hutchins? You're on tap for the next three, so just stand in place.
I will say that we've used staff development for educators for probably eight or nine years as far as a group that actually goes out and finds these individuals and recommends them to districts. Two of the three people that we have on here tonight were with us last year. Mama Jay is, she was a real hit at the high school last year. The money that we're utilizing for this is Title II funds, which is for professional development and provided by the federal government for this specific, you know, type of event. If we sent teachers to a, another venue, it would probably cost us more to do that as opposed to bringing those individuals here. We'll have anywhere from 100 to 120 teachers at each one of these three events. These three events are all scheduled for the elementary schools.
Elementary schools?
All elementary, yes.
And will be held at the elementary schools?
Right now, we're holding those at Harold McCormick Gymnasium, yes. All three.
Any questions? Item on the floor is to approve contract with staff development for educators for professional development training with David Burgess on May 29, 2013 in the amount of $3,843 to be paid from Title II funds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is approve contract with staff development for educators for professional development training with Katherine McKnight on May 30, 2013 in the amount of $4,524 to be paid from Title II funds. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, may I get a second?
I'll second the motion.
I think he's filled you in. If I'm mistaken, he didn't want to get up either again, so those, it's actually essential. It's federal money, so.
Are all these folks with the same company or the same group or?
They're independent contractors. There are a couple of different groups that we could call and contact and ask to provide speakers for us. These particular speakers all work with staff development educators and I think they give a small portion for the scheduling of those individuals. And they're all over the country and that's why the price is fair.
Again, is this going to be held at Harold McCormick?
All of these are going to be here.
All of these are going to be.
Yeah, Harold McCormick.
Thank you.
Anything else? Item on the floor is to approve contract with staff development for educators for professional development training with Katherine McKnight on May 30, 2013 in the amount of $4,524 to be paid from Title II funds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next, approved contract with staff development for educators for professional development training with Cynthia Mama Jay Johnson on May 31, 2013 in the amount of $4,104 to be paid from Title II funds. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, can I get a second? Thank you. Any questions on this one? Okay. I'm going to read it again, and the last time. Approved, item on the floor is to approve contract with staff development for educators for professional development training with Cynthia Mama Jay Johnson on May 31, 2013 in the amount of $4,104 to be paid from Title II funds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We have removed the next, so we'll go over to your supplemental page. Item on the floor is to approve change order request number 001 to sod baseball field, sod baseball field infield at TAW Junior High School construction project in the amount of $2,500. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll so moved.
Can I have a second?
Yes.
Thank you. I think Mr. Van Haas?
He probably can address both of those lines here.
Thank you. The first one is the $2,500 for the baseball infield. Currently in the contract, part of the value engineering that we did to try to get that price down is something that the school system could afford, would be within budget. We were just going to cede the infield. Talking with the baseball coaches, there is a safety issue, you know, if you take bad hops off uneven, uneven playing surface. So the coaches and administration at TAW felt strongly enough, they've gone out and talked to some people in the community about the possibility of donating money to, for us to be able to go in and sod the infield, just on the baseball field. And so this request will be paid for by donations. I spoke with Mr. Little again earlier to verify that he has gotten, he doesn't have all that money in hand, but he has received commitments from people in the community. So that, the system will be reimbursed that amount. The reason it's on here now is this is time-sensitive in that the project is moving along very well. They're almost a month ahead of schedule, assuming the weather stays the way it is. You know, prior to the next, the May board meeting, they may need to have approval to go ahead and start with a sod. So that's why it's on here at this time. But again, I spoke with Mr. Little and he's assured me that he's had several people tell him not to worry, that they'll, they'll help with that.
Is this $2,500 a firm price or is it a estimate?
Yes, it is. No, no, this is a firm price from the contractor. And we actually, at our progress meeting yesterday, spoke with the same gentleman that's putting in the irrigation system, will also be putting in the sod as well as grassing the rest of the field. So yes, that is a, that is a firm price.
Anything else? Ms. particular item?
Not this, I was going to ask something on the electrical.
We'll get on that one.
Okay, we can go to more of the time?
Yep, we'll have to.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Item on the floor is approved change order request number 001 to sod baseball field infield at TAW Junior High School construction project, amount of $2,500. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Last item is approved proposed change order request number 002 to relocate electrical service for the baseball field at TAW Junior High School construction project, increasing the aid to, that we do construction allowance by $7,000. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Can I get a second?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Van Haas?
Again, along the same lines, as you can see, there's some attachments there you should have, you should have two documents from Harold Damron, who was the, who was the electrical engineer in charge of the project. And there are two different attachments, one dated October the 30th, 2012, and one January the 4th, 2013. The reason there are two documents, the original document, October 30th, was when we originally put the project out for bid, the work that was included. As you know, again, the bids came in, they were, the bids were higher than our budget, so we did some value engineering things to try to lower the cost again within budget. In that process, the electrical engineers sent these changes to the electric system and, you know, as you can see there, again, the estimate was somewhere around $10,000. So based on that information, that's the amount that was put into the contract was $10,000 based on that estimate. We've since been told that it's going to exceed that amount. It's still not, they've still not told us a firm price on that. You know, we've been told things like, you know, the utilities will run from the pole underground to the transformer, and I think we've been told that's about $45 a foot to do that. There's another pole they have to take down that's, that I think the charge to take that pole down is around $3,500. So they have yet to tell us a firm price. And again, just as the other issue, our fear is that the project's moving along and before we could get the board to approve it, they'll be needing to do the work and then we, you know, they may have to stop progress on the project for two or three weeks. So yesterday at the construction meeting, we were trying to think of a way, you know, how to deal with this and one thought was, well, if you would grant us to do an allowance specifically for this amount, that would give us enough playroom based on whatever that final cost is. And as, as in any allowance in the project, any of that money that's not used will come straight back to the school system. straight back to the school system. So this is just a safety net to cover those additional costs. And, you know, this is, this is not anything negative toward the electric system. They gave us a ballpark number, and for whatever reason, that ballpark number, you know, is not, is not going to be enough.
Question I have is the, the original $15,000 that was essentially, is that already in this $373,000?
No, based on the second document, when they reduced the price and we brought that to the board to approve the value engineering, it was lowered to $10,000.
Okay, so there's $10,000 in this $373,000.
Correct, correct.
Before it approved for electrical.
Correct. And I think there's a, there's an either $5,000 or $10,000 contingency allowance in here as well, but our fear is if we eat every bit of that up this early in the project on the electrical, there may be something that pops up that again, we, we have to delay until, you know, a board meeting before we can, and the project's moving along because we've had, you know, fairly nice weather, and, you know, obviously the sooner we can get it finished, the better. But again, this specific allowance, you know, again, is written in, and I think you, I think I put a document on there, a draft of the change order, and it's specifically for this aid to construction for electrical. And as anything else, you know, we'll have, you know, exact prices, you know, from the electric system to show you, so everyone will see, you know, every penny that was spent on that.
So basically, this is safety net and some wiggle room.
Yes, because, again, because, you know, if we, if they said it was going to be another $4,500, we'd be asking for $4,500, but they've not been able to tell us that amount yet, and we know it'll be another month before we can ask for that.
Very happy it's moving at a good pace.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. It's not something like we can go out and get other bids on, you know, the electric system, you know, is required to do this, this work.
And I did notice in the relocation, they're going from a pole mounted, three, you know, transformers and stuff, which is a little unsightly, and they're going to underground power lines.
Yes, sir.
Which is very pleasing, and it looks.
And that's one thing they talked about. They said, you know, we can lower the cost and do that, but we all agree that that's the wrong thing to do if we want to do the project right the first time on the front end.
I feel like the underground part would be cleaner, look, not really going to see it.
Absolutely.
Basically, it won't be there.
Yes, sir.
I think that would be.
We couldn't understand.
But I think that'd be money well spent.
We couldn't understand why, if they were going to take the pole and transformer away and could reuse it, why it'd be $3,500, $3,600 and things of that nature, but we understand that the underground is more.
There's a lot of expense.
Yeah, we certainly.
As aprices down, go away with them, but the trenching and everything for the undergrounds, I think that everybody would be pleased with.
I think so.
The removal of the power lines and the appearance of the, you'd just be a little green box.
Yes, sir.
That could be okay.
Anybody else?
I'm listening to him. He's got more experience than anybody with the electric system, so.
I think it'd be a good thing.
I think, yeah, and it's just up to that amount if they need it.
Yeah, hopefully they can maybe come in under that, you know, as soon as I can say it's, it's just.
Okay.
I'm on the floor is approved proposed change order request number 002 to relocate electrical service for the baseball field at TAW Junior High, construction project, increasing the aid to construction allowance by $7,000. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Couple of things before we leave. In the back of your information only, we are still trying to get workshops and capital improvement projects. I know that Ms. Perkins, you know, obviously we are not going to have anything on honors day, graduation, around that time, but we really need to try to get a day, sat down, especially, let's see, we've got down for capital projects workshop and a policy workshop. So as soon as we can get that in, that would be terrific. Anybody brought it tonight and can we give that to her? I'm sure she will love you forever, or at least for a while.
And we're, hopefully, if Mrs. Armstrong and Ms. Baker's recovery comes along quicker than what we anticipate that it might, hopefully, you know, we'll be at a time convenience where they will, obviously, we want them present for that as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, actually, that's, that brings up a point that I wanted to address. I'm, I'm not, I haven't got any pre-prepared statements or anything, but I, I guess I feel, I feel obligated to make certain that those who are observing are understanding that we have heard over the past few weeks as a board, the, I think we've all heard that there are concerns about our policies and about other things, and I'm a new member on this board, and I know Mr. Isaacs are, is, and as I've discussed with those who are senior members, including Ms. Baker before she left town, and before Ms. Armstrong became ill, and then after she was hospitalized, I've spoken with her. And I think we all have a lot of concern about the system. We want many of the same goals, but, you know, we are working towards this, these policy workshops. We're growing together as, as a board. Some of us have just completed our new board member training that is required, and some of us are still waiting to go. These are very weighty issues, and they require a great deal of thought, a lot of responsibility is on our shoulders to weigh all aspects, and at times, there are opinions and issues that seem incontrovertible when spoken, but when explored very carefully and weighed against all aspects, that will require a lot of deliberation and time, and this board must deliberate as a group. We are independent citizens outside of here. I know some of those said that they had sent emails to us and didn't get responses, but, you know, I know for a fact that I've responded to those who ask questions, and I've tried, as I know the rest of the board members have, to answer within the confines of law and where, where possible. Granted, we weren't able to, I was not able to reach every person who contacted, but I was very impressed with the fact that there are so many people that care about what's going on. But I want it to be known that we care about what's going on too, and that's, that's the reason we have been giving our time here on this board to serve, and I take it very seriously. I know that Ms. Armstrong, that Ms. Brewer, that Ms. Baker, and that Mr. Isaacs all share this. I'm certain of that. I have seen their commitment to a board, and while we may not always agree, we have a range of experience and different, come from different backgrounds. That experience needs to be fully represented when we have policy workshops, and these issues are very weighty that need to be discussed. I would propose that we discuss many of these types of things in our workshop where we can, sit down at a kitchen table format, face to face, and kind of hammer out what would make some of these issues be improvements upon our already good system. I also heard a lot of people, although concerned, state the positive features of our system, and they gave credit to where credit was due, so I am very respectful that they were able to, even having strong feelings about the current situation, to state that we had a good system despite their concerns. And so while there will always be issues that come up of that nature, I feel like that we need to add that into our, when we do one of these workshops, but that it should be fully represented. And I'm sorry that our other two board members can't be here as well, but I hope that I'm not overstepping to ask that we do that.
I apologize, but I need for, to ask, I need to request that we move the May board meeting. I'm going to be out of town on the 16th. Would Monday or Tuesday of that week work for?
I can do either day.
Either day? Which one tends to work better, do you think?
Ms. Wilson, would either of those dates during that week, on Monday or Tuesday, be better as far as having our financials ready by then?
Friday is Monday's meeting.
Okay. Tuesday then possibly would be better than Monday?
That would be Tuesday the 13th, or the 14th, May the 14th for the next board meeting.
Is that okay with everyone?
Do we, yeah, yes, that's fine with me. So do we have a policy workshop coming up? Is it, we just don't know the date yet, is that what you're saying?
That's what we.
Okay, I was making sure.
Yes, we need to.
Yeah, I thought so.
As quick as we can.
I will meet with you afterwards if you have time.
Don't be long. Next regularly scheduled board meeting will be Tuesday, May 14th, 2013, at 6:30 PM in the MacPierce Boardroom. Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Good night.